I call the Hudsonville City Commission September 12th, 2023 to order. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bolheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeBrey?
Here.
Broke?
Here.
Lorar?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup.
Aye. I'd like now to have a moment of silence for reflection and prayer if you so choose. Thank you. Now's the time for public comments. If somebody in the public would choose to address the commission, please step forward and give us your name, your address. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. There are three minutes of the city commission regular session dated August 11th, minutes of the city commission work session dated August 22nd, and minutes of the DDA Downtown Development Authority meeting dated September 6th. Are there any changes to those minutes? For the record, there was no planning commission this last month, so that's why there are no minutes for the planning commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Consent agenda items carry. Moving on to new business, public safety. Fire chief, you are up.
Good evening. August was a busy month. You saw on the report, we had 71 calls per service. Probably our busiest month in our history ever. That brings our total for the year to 401. So at this pace, we will get very close to 600 calls for the year. So if we're moving that 550 to 600 range, so for us, that's definitely an increase. Calls of note, well, first of all, before I get into that, along with that, at the fair, we treated probably 25 to 30 patients, which has not been a call allowed, just because we didn't take incident number four. So it was just heater exhaustion, cuts, things that we took care of there, and then they did transport vehicle, so that we didn't pull incident number four. I believe there was three incidents that we did pull numbers for at the fair that were serious enough in nature. All in all, a good week, really. Things went as good as they could. The storm is what kind of rolled in and shook our world a little bit, but I think all of it went very, very well. The heat, the heat was a factor on Wednesday and Thursday, too, so got through that. Throughout the month, though, we still had to handle calls everywhere else in town, so the hazmat spill at Intex was our biggest call, and that happened just prior to last month of city commission, but it wasn't the month of August. That was, that was a big event for us. And then we did assist Georgetown on a structure fire on a Sunday night on Verde Street. It's actually right across from Presidential Drive. There's five houses there that are actually in the township. So it's a township call, but our resources are much closer, so we get to go in on automatic aid to help them out. Not that much damage. Early, it was caught very quickly, so. And then our training in August, you can see what we trained on, and then maybe one other note in there is we did have one firefighter submit a letter of resignation. I would almost maybe use the word is retirement, 30 some years in the fire service. We're gonna miss Mike. Mike is actually here in attendance tonight, but there will be an open house for him, so I'll let you know when that's gonna be. We'll get a plaque engraved in for prior to show our appreciation to Mike, and that'll be upcoming here, probably the month of October. But yeah, that was, that was hard for us to take. Mike has many years of experience, wants to go a little different direction in his life, so we support him in that as well. Any questions? Mike is here.
Any questions by the commissioners? Any comments? I have a couple. When, when we get dispatched into the townships and we expend resources or equipment, is there any reimbursable there, or is that just come with the territory?
Only if it's a hazmat related call. So if it's just on a structure fire, no, it's called mutual aid, we, we give and then we also receive as well.
So there's no formal, nothing formal?
No.
Okay. And I'm okay with that, just kind of was wondering if that's...
Right, so there's a, there's a formal agreement signed saying that we're gonna provide our resources at no charge to you, and there, and then reciprocation.
Right, right.
To give theirs to us.
Now, is that something that's come before this body? Cause I never recall us...
Yep, so it, so it does periodically. It's, it's usually a good five to 10 years.
Five years, okay.
Yeah, so it's been a little while since that's maybe seen, longer than 10 years since that mutually act has been signed.
Right. Pull, pull it out when you get a chance. I'm just kind of curious what, what that is.
Sure.
Just throw a copy in my inbox if you would.
There was a whole discussion last time that it went through. I know this, this body critiqued it a little bit. Georgetown wanted us to help them in a few other areas, and I know the city commission leaned back a little and said, yeah, let's, let's, you know, let's temper that a little bit. So there, there's a boundary out there as far as we're involved.
Is it both Georgetown and Jamestown then, both? What about Blendon, they part of that too?
Yes, I, I believe it's two separate agreements. I will pull them up.
Just, just pull it out and make a copy or take a look at it and throw it in my inbox. I'm just kind of curious to read it.
Absolutely.
Yeah? And so how are you in staffing right now?
Our staffing is quite low.
So how, how low are you? How many, how many opens do you have?
Ideally, ideally, we would like to be around 20 firefighters. We just hired a new cadet, so with that cadet, we are now at 14 with Mike's absence. So that cadet's not even up to full speed yet. So people that are up to full speed is more like 12, and then we have two cadets to give us 14.
But it appears like Andrew's been working to interview some of the candidates, right?
We're, we're exploring as many opportunities as we can to drum up people who aren't interested. But even if they join today, it still takes us a good year to, to months to get them where we need to have them.
Any other questions for, for Archie?
Just, just along with lines without agreement, I mean, it probably works out to be somewhat fair, like you help them, they help you. Is there any, has there been any issue in the past years? And I'm not even saying just our way, but let's say we did 10 calls, they did one, or they did 10 calls, we did one?
Yep, so on page four of your report, you're gonna actually have a breakdown of that. It's gonna show how many times we went out on auto aid. So for, so now for the year, we have gone out on auto aid 20 times, and we've received it in 14 times. And then mutually is where they get to something and they're like, we need more help. We work on auto aid, but they call us in. We went out nine times and we called help in two times. So basically, you're looking at 29 times we left and 16 times they came in.
So I guess my, my point of that is, you know, just to make sure that the agreement is fair to all parties involved, and again, just not just talking about us, but that it's fair to all parties involved, because if we or another community has to expend twice the resources, is it fair to that community to not have some type of, you know, reciprocation, whether it's financial or other accounting for that? I don't know, maybe that's something when the agreement's looked at that maybe that's a part of it, or...
Yeah, just take, take a look at it and let us know.
Yep, so we'll, we'll take a look at that, and as our staffing levels decline, of course, you can never tell on your call line, but that's when you start to rely on your neighbors a little bit more. So I know right now, we've probably given more than what we've received, but I can see in the near future, we're probably gonna receive more than what we give. So we just want to make sure that, like you said, it's fair all the way around, and that even if it's just one year, they have more calls than typical, we might have that same thing happen 100 years' time where they're coming here a bunch of times.
Anything else for the fire chief? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike, you got a minute? You wanna come up here? Coming up?
That's it, Tom. I'm the only one that's here. It must be me, huh?
How many years?
33 between Jamestown and Hudsonville. I believe it's 22 in Jamestown and 11 here, or something like that.
Are you staying in the community? Are you moving away, or?
No, I'll probably stay.
Okay. Any standout moments or events that really bed in your brain?
Oh boy, I would say, looking at Steve, cause he would have been there probably as well, but I'd say the church that I grew up in had a fire January 2 of 1999. Probably was one of the coldest fires. I think there was a blizzard going on at the time, and that's the same type of hardware stored here in town burned down as well, so it's probably about my biggest one.
Was that, that was probably personally devastating, everything to watch your church burn, huh?
Yeah, yeah, cause I'd say that the sanctuary roof collapsed within five, six minutes of us having a scene, so. And then I'd say I had a friend...
What church was that?
Jamestown, they're from. And then I had a good friend, when I first got out, I had a good friend, his two-month-old baby passed away, did CPR, and that was probably two, I don't know, three months.
Well, we're, we're very privileged that you gave us all those years of service, and we wish you well. And people like you are hard to replace, so if you can find somebody out there in the community and talk them into coming in behind you, we would love that, but good luck to you, and we look forward to your retirement party, and certainly let us know, Steve, wouldn't you?
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Sheriff's apartment, I guess the sergeant is...
Is that safety?
Is it's the safety night? I don't know, I took a look at this, I don't think there was anything there that stood out, other than maybe the signature coffee event and cram the cruisers on Meyer and some of the things they've been doing for the, the local schools, but I think we all know they were pretty busy during the, the fair week, too, so. Having said that, any questions on Jeff's report? Hearing none. Dave, you're up.
All right, good evening. Back to here, highlight just a couple of things on, on the report. August, of course, is, is busy, cause not only do we have the fair and a lot of other things going on, but there were some communities around here that we help out, and so we did a little bit of that, went up to Grand Game with their Coast Guard fireworks, they love to have us there, that's a big event. And helped Coopers go for the first time ever with their Congress. That's an event that I wanted to help out with for a long time, just sort of want to watch the cars go by, and so we were able to help them. But the fair went very well, I think. My team feels like, like well, we did a couple of things different this year. One is we decentralized some of the decision-making, so instead of one person deciding everything for every single person out there on the, on the traffic detail, we broke them into squads based on geographically where they were, and then the squad leader at, at the main entrance on the west side, and the squad leader at the north lot, and the squad leader at 36th and Grant. And that person was then leading one or two other people, and they were, were able to make their own decisions in the field. That helped us a lot. It lessened the, all the chatter that had to come back and forth and trying to figure out what was going on out there. So that, I think, worked well. And we have a new hire, Bill King, that joined us last fall, and one of the reasons I wanted him on the team was his experience. He was a Highland PD reserve years ago, so he spent time in central dispatch, and he's done a lot of emergency management work in the past. So we put him in the EOC the entire time during the fair, and that gave us somebody who was really running the traffic command, other than me standing in middle 48, that we're trying to also work the radio. And that worked phenomenally well, and during the severe weather event that Thursday, Bill was able to be in contact with the weather service almost whatever, 15, 20 minutes, I think. He would call the weather service for an update, so we can get real-time estimates of when the storm was expected to hit Hudsonville, and allow us to minimize the disruption to the fair. So we were really glad that we hired Bill, and he loved doing it, so worked out well.
Lot of good public comments about the fair this year, just for your teams, that really is, it's a big win for the community.
Thank you. The motors were very cooperative this year, we got a lot of smiles. I got a high five from the motors, which had never happened to me before.
Any questions or discussion from the commission for Dave? Thanks again, Dave, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Moving on to traffic control order number 23 dash 02, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve traffic control order number 23 dash 02 for the closure of Harvey Street, the Wunner from Plaza Avenue to School Avenue, Central Boulevard from Plaza Avenue to School Avenue, and Plaza Avenue from Harvey Street to Kelly Street on October 7, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Second the motion.
It's been moved and supported. Everybody clear on this control order? We do it every year, it's urban heydays. I do believe this does include social districting, too, will be in place. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Broke?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Lorar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Moving on to finance number seven, city treasurer's monthly report. Now, we don't have the finance director, but that position will be filled at the next meeting, and we can probably get a little more details from the new finance manager, I'm sure, when he shows up, the finance director. I did talk to Ashley briefly. There is nothing significant or stand out. We do have an additional sheet that she did provide for the investment report. I think she said there's two that came due and that were renewed, which, were those, these the ones in the green, or the orange on the sheet?
Yeah, the JP Morgan Chase came due, and we let that one cash out until the new finance director is here, so that way it makes the change over for all the details personnel-wise easier for the reinvestment of that. And then the federal home loan bank bond came due, and we reinvested that one as well into the Stort Financial in the green there for 100,000 at a higher rate of 5.25%.
So we did pretty good at the rate, 5.25, wow. Who, who did the investigation? Who looked into that? Did you, did you dog that yourself, or?
Our broker through the multi-bank security reaches out and sends us updates of rates, and we looked at what he had to offer for reinvesting.
Good. Any questions for Ashley on the treasurer's report? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number eight, payment of the bills. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $971,501.71, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the finance committee.
Support.
So it's been moved and supported. Any discussions on payment of the bills? I do note that the finance committee quite often asks questions on the weekly report, which means you guys are looking at it, and I appreciate you delving into an occasional detail, because I think that gives you some understanding where, how the money's being spent. And occasionally, you just find an accident. I know it's, when I was in finance committee, sometimes I just found something that was just an accident, wasn't anything deliberate, but it's important that there's a little bit oversight there. Any questions on the motion that's on the floor? Hearing none, roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner DeBrey?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Broke?
Yes.
Lorar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. The motion carries. Moving on to ACH funds distribution, is there a motion?
I will make a motion to confirm the funds distributed by Automated Clearinghouse in the amount of $6,934,337.71, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
Support.
So it's been moved and supported, that's a pretty big amount there. City manager, do you know why it was, what?
Taxes.
Taxes?
Every August.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner DeBrey?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Broke?
Yes.
Lorar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, moving on. Well, before we do that, I just want to call the note when we're in the finance section here. We do have the spreadsheet, the large spreadsheet that you all have been given there, that's tracking the grants, and if there's change to this, or you don't like the formatting, let Tyler know, but if I, you know, this kind of meets the purpose of tracking the grants that are in queue that we're looking to get, and the far right there, you can see the ones that have been approved. I did ask Tyler if he could do a summation of the approved amount, so we can see a gross numbers to where we are for, I don't know, maybe a rolling year or a finance year, I don't know what, how you want to format.
The mic was presented in a couple of different ways, but...
But I think this is really a true measurement of some of the activities in terms of what the city's been working on. I see Steve Essenberg's name on here a lot. Steve, good job, and we know that you've been very fruitful in getting us grants, and it shows, so thank you. So are there any questions on this, this grant format, this little spreadsheet? If there are, let's give Tyler a call, and he'll reformat it, but I want to express my appreciation to you and the staff for putting this together and having a, a tracking system, so that we, as the commissioners in the community, know what that is. Any comments on that?
I second that, Mayor. I really like this visibility. I appreciate that.
We haven't had that before, so it's helpful.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a big win. It's a brag point, and we all need a brag point occasionally, so.
Do you guys have any ideas, want to see more information? We can always point it, but this is a living document, so we can adjust.
More color, that'd be nice.
Yeah, I'm not good at that, but I'll look at that. Scarlet and gray.
Yeah, I said, careful you asked for him. It won't be amazing blue. Okay, let's move on to administration. Item number 10, AT&amp;T Metro Act Permit Extension, is there a motion?
Smart man.
Make a motion to approve a five-year Metro Act Permit Extension for AT&amp;T Michigan expiring on 12/31/2028.
Second the motion.
So it's been moved and supported. Do we have the memo? Can we pull it up? This is boilerplate, it comes up every five years. It's just a right-of-way for the AT&amp;T to, to work within their right-of-ways here, right? It's boilerplate, attorney, I'm sure, sees this, right?
For this? I did not have the attorney review it. These are pretty standard in their municipal operations, allows them to continue to do maintenance and work on the lines. If they were to change the language, we'd...
Any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lorar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Broke?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to item number 12, Michigan Municipal League Voting Delegate Nominations. Who are the nominations?
We haven't had them yet.
We haven't had them yet. Is there one who...
There's only a couple people going.
I'm going.
I'm going.
And I nominate Jack.
Jack's going, and who else?
Thanks.
And Dan's going.
I nominate Dan.
Dan? Can we pencil your name in, Dan? Can we pencil your name in?
Can we pencil Jack's name in? Yeah.
Help me here, Toby, come on. One of you guys, huh?
How about I just make a motion? How about you just make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve Dan Bolheys as representative and Jack Groome as alternate representative at the annual business meeting of the MML Annual Convention.
I second that.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussions? And the MML conference is October... Clerk?
18 through 20.
18 through 20, thank you very much. Motions on the floor, any of the discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, so we're all real clear. We're not, you're not gonna do a roll call this? I just gotta go, hand vote?
You don't have to do it. You don't have to do a roll call.
Well, I think we'll do it just, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Before I ask to adjourn, let's just go down the dais and see if anybody has anything to add. Toby?
I do not have anything to add. Oh, I do. I do. I just wanted to say, Mike, thanks for your time of service to the city, and I am excited about what your next step is, I think that's really cool, so. I support you on that, 100%.
My family had a great time at safety night. Thank you to our finest that were out there. Also, just appreciate how we handled someone exercising their free speech unnecessarily, so, so, thank you.
I heard you got offered a hot dog?
Of beef one.
Of all beef, hot dog, so it was kosher. Phil?
Just after the month when the fair is, I just appreciate our emergency services personnel, cause I hear multiple comments every year about how well things go and how professional and courteous our staff is at that fair, so thank you.
Starts with the leadership, Dave. Larry?
I was just gonna echo that, because our staff does a fabulous job, because it's a lot of people and a lot of work, and it runs smoothly. So thank you.
I had the opportu, well, last month, we toured the nature center, and then I had the opportunity, Dave invited me to tour one of his facilities in Holland, and I seriously couldn't have been more impressed. I mean, I, I had really no idea what to expect, and I was just blown away. Really, really impressed. So if there was any chance that we could do something similar to that in Hudsonville, I think we really need to look into it, cause that was really cool. Thanks again, Dave.
Thank you.
I have approached both senior leadership in Royal Technologies and at Sound Off Signal, and there was no doubt or hesitation on the part of the senior leadership that they would be supportive to, so obviously, that's gonna develop here, but just so you know that the temperament in the community is, yes, we need good quality daycare for our children, for the workforce, to maintain our workforce, so, just for the record. Jack?
I'd just like to echo, thank you, Mike, for your years of service, really appreciated all the time you've given to our city. Thank you very much. And then I was watching the county commission meeting, and they were talking about the early voting, and I just wanted to say to Jill, thank you very much for all of your work. I'm not sure exactly where it's going, looks, I think it looks promising, but anyways, thank you so much for all your work on that.
Ashley, and then? I think you want, you want to give us a bit of an update, or not?
The finance committee for the county, which is 10 of the 11 commissioners, voted to bring it to the board, but they removed it from the agenda today, so I was there to give public comment in favor of the agreement, so.
So you spoke for three minutes?
Yes.
And they were courteous?
I guess. I kind of lacked it out, so.
I'm sure you did a fine job, Jill. We're very proud of you, and we need that voice out there. Sergeant, you got anything to add? I spoke for you.
I didn't know what I probably do, but I think, no, as far, today was amazing. We had a lot of people, and it was a lot of, we had a busy month, and you guys were all, especially, I really think that was important, so just appreciated you guys' support. It means a lot.
Very well, before I turn this over to you, I'll, I have a couple of comments. One is, I've asked to stand up the ad hoc alcohol board this spring, this fall, because we're gonna be needing to understand as a commission where we are with alcohol permits within the city limits in regards to the new development, because I just see us coming this winter, being approached as a city about more liquor licenses. And we've issued the five, but can we issue more? If we don't issue more, where would those liquor licenses come from? And I just think it's important as a body, we begin to understand, have a couple of people up here that understand what is that mechanism and how much control do we have for the alcohol, serving the alcohol in the city? Because we've done a really good job up now, but we haven't had the ad hoc board since, for quite a while. So if you're interested in serving on that ad hoc board, please let Tyler know, that we need two of you. You served on the last time, I think? Or not?
I don't think so, it's been a while, but I would...
Okay. Our next work session is September 26th. Are we visiting any of the facilities in town? Nope. I do know that we're going to be discussing the Ken jipping property and opportunities for that. I'll let you speak to that here shortly. And then the library public hearing is on the 19th at Terrace Square at 6:30. You all should have a handout on that. I think you understand that's a pretty important public hearing. What we call, is it a...
It's an information open house.
Information open house, yeah.
The format is open house, I think it's 6:30 to 8:30?
6:30 to 8:00. But we will stay and answer questions with anyone that...
Correct. And that's all I have. I'll turn it over to you, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing, Jill, thank you for representing the city in such a professional manner at the county meeting today. As everyone knows, elections are not only vital to our democracy, they are one of our chief responsibilities as a city. Jill is the president of the Ottawa County Clerks Association and has been instrumental in working with Justin Robuck, the county clerk, on this agreement. So Jill, thank you and definitely well done this morning. Two things, as a newer resident, I attended my first Hudsonville Fair and my first safety night. The fair was such a good time the first time, I had to come back second night as well. I do blame Chief Essenberg. Dave, I'll give you a little there for the weather on Thursday night during the destruction race derby portion of the night. But I was really proud to be a member of this community and seeing the fair. It was a great time. Kudos to Bryn Abink and everybody who participated in safety night. Phenomenal turnout, very proud of not only the volunteers, but our team. Very well attended and great to see such community support. And, you know, a lot of kids run around learning about what we do, what they do, excuse me, when it comes to emergency services and everything related. Good news, Monday, September 18th is the day I've looked forward to since June 9th. The new finance director will start, Andrew Smith. I believe his plane touched down in Holland today. Hope he had a great flight and he's well rested. No jet lag for Andrew, but he will start on Monday. HR Director Andrew Rabinal has put together, working with the department heads, a very good onboarding process and timelines to get him acclimated. We're going to throw a lot at him, we'll know when to pump the brakes a little bit. We need to get him fully immersed. And on that note, really appreciate Ashley's leadership through this transition. It's been, you know, tough on staff in various times, but Ashley and her team have definitely stepped up, so Ashley, very much appreciated. The 32nd Avenue and Balsam Repayment Project has started, if anyone has not noticed. It is a road project, we appreciate the public's patience in dealing with the matter. New asphalt, really exciting. Phase one will go until this Friday. As of right now, the texts I received a couple hours ago, we'll have asphalt down on Thursday, some, the initial restriping on Friday, and then we'll start with phase two on Balsam Avenue next week. We are hoping to reach substantial completion by next Friday. If you haven't noticed, Hudsonville Flats along Service Drive next to Hudson Center One, demo's completed, we have fencing around the area. I'm really looking forward to the completion of that project and it's great to see some substantial work taking place. And then finally, Terrace Station, the old farmer's co-op property. The Chris Venis Clausen developer has formally applied for MEDC funding as of two weeks ago Monday. I had a great conversation with him about a week and a half ago. We have some initial documents in the planning commission where they'll look towards an informal review next Wednesday. There's a lot of steps to take place, it is a big project. So I'll be sure to keep the city commission updated. After the planning commission meeting, I'll probably shoot out a memo, just let you know timelines on where we're at. Outside of that, we do have a workshop meeting on September 26th. There'll be two to three items on the agenda with one of them being jipping, so that's all I have.
Very good. Any other questions or discussion from the department heads or the commissioners?
That work session will be normal time?
Six o'clock usually? Is it six, the work session?
Sure. What do you guys prefer?
Six.
Dave, can you...
I'll be there.
Awesome.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
It's been moved and supported. Did you get the names?
No.
Second.
I think it was Phil and Jack, wasn't it?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
You both talked at the same time, so.
Same people that love me to dance.
All those in favor of adjournings, say aye. Railroad it. All those opposed, say no. We are adjourned, thank you, gentlemen.